The Brownsville Area Board of Directors will meet in regular session on Thursday, February 20, 2014. Matt Brownsville, High School Auditorium, White Falcon John Brownsville, for behavior of general purposes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Here.
Mr. Bane.
Here.
Mr. Breschier.
Clear.
Mr. Delarose.
Here.
Mr. Dorsey.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Seeley.
Here.
Mrs. Terebekia.
Here.
You stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in your name, in the visible, veritable, and just as.
Okay, item two, contend with the marksman.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to congratulate the Brownsville Falcons basketball team. For the last four years, they've been in the playoffs. And this year, 2013-14 school year, they've been crowned section champs. They made it to the second round of the WPIL playoffs. I'd like to commend the players, the coaches, the parents, boosters, board members, and students as a whole for the great turnouts and the support that they gave the team. I talked to them yesterday before the game, and I told them not only are they playing for themselves, but they're playing for the school, in the community, as well as their teammates. I believe that not only them, but us, some of our other sports, are creating a winning heritage again in Brownsville Area School District. They handle themselves with great intensity on the court, as well as having a sense of a gracious winner at the end of the game. We're very proud of them and of their accomplishments, and I'd like to congratulate everyone.
Now that you mention that, Doctor Up in the booth are two of the basketball players, Carl Della Pena in the crutches and Michael Carney. Okay, item three, public remarks on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name, nature of business.
My name is Rachel McHugh, formerly Rachel Baxter, and I'm glad you brought up the basketball. The nature of my business is the coaching position for the girls' team. I have a few words, I'll be brief, though. It has always been said that participating in sports is one of the most effective ways of developing our character. To learn in the spirit of healthy competition, the art of teamwork, of cooperation, of accepting defeat gracefully, and displaying humility within victory, is what was taken to be the meaning of sports. Sports are a test of patience, of overcoming challenges, and hence show a person's tolerance level. In addition to wins and losses, a game itself is a true test of how a person will conduct themselves in a pressurized situation. It is a trial for one's nerves of how a sportsman conducts him or herself when under pressure in a game can reveal how they will react to real-life stressful situations. Along with participating in sports comes coaching. It is as key to winning as the players are. Coaches have a tremendous influence, especially in high school sports. I think a coach's primary job description should be to be an exemplary role model and provide an atmosphere for the student-athlete to take full advantage of their basketball potential, or any sport. And a coach should be a teacher of the game. A coach should be a motivator, a coach should be a mentor. And while it is not the coach's job to be friends with his players, I do think coaches should make every attempt to show his or her players they care about them as people, not just as basketball players. As a coach, whether at small high school or a major university, you should get to know your players, know what is going on in their life, find out what makes them tick, and do your best to stay up with the times. How well do you know your players, families or boyfriends? Do you know how to text message or what Facebook even is? Do you know what kind of music your players listen to? Do you know what their goals and dreams are? And while, I reiterate, it is not the coach's job to be friends with his players, nor try to emulate them in how they dress or speak, but a coach should make every attempt to be likable and show that they care. Kids will always play harder for someone they like, as well as someone they know cares about them. If you get on your kids really hard when they don't do well, as... Oh, shoot. If you get on your kids really hard when they don't do well, do you balance out with encouragement and praise when they do? It has been my experience that kids crave discipline as long as it comes from someone they care about. It is important for a coach to understand, especially when dealing with today's kids, that they respect and trust has to be earned. They aren't automatic like they were 15 years ago. A player is not going to respect you just because you are the coach. You have to earn the respect through the way you carry yourself and the way you treat them. Even though it might not be your taste, respect the way they walk, talk, and dress. And if you truly want your players to work hard for you every day, then you need to work just as hard for them. Put effort into your practice plans, scouting reports, and team functions. Come in early and stay late. The more you do for your players, the more they will do for you. The player-to-coach and coach-to-player relationship is fundamental for the ultimate success on the court.
Please wrap up, we've got three minutes.
I graduated from Brownsville in '97. I participated in high school basketball and developed into a confident person because of that. I also had coaches that I respected. I may not have always agreed with them, but I respected their decisions. I took what I learned and began to coach Biddy League at Direct Center. The reason I'm telling you all this tonight is because I had the pleasure of coaching a lot of the girls that are currently on the high school team. I've noticed that a lot of their skills have not improved since Biddy League. I've also noticed the lack of camaraderie on the court and the unhappiness that surrounds the court. These do not even look like the same girls. I remember the smiles and the laughing, the eagerness to play. I want to see that back. I want to see the basketball program thrive like it did when I played. There is more talent in the school now than there was when I was here, and all they need is the leadership.
Thank you. I must apologize, it's my error, I let you speak on an un-agenda item, I shouldn't have it, so... Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, item, anyone else on agenda items?
Mr. President, we have the auditors here. Would you want them to do the audit, wrap up now or later?
Let's get down to after solicitor's report.
Very good. Item four, adoption of agenda and lay of materials for cooperation and minutes. Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item five, approval of the January 16, 2014 Board of Minutes. Motion by Director Terebekia, second by Director Bane, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item six, Director Bane for Treasury.
The approval of the January 2014 General Fund Capital Fund, Title I and Title II, A to D Cafeteria Fund, Treasury, financial reports.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terebekia.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Breschier.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yes.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Item seven, approval of the following funds you have before you. Motion by Director Terebekia, second by Director Bane, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yes.
Mr. Breschier.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Terebekia.
Yes.
Item seven, solicitor, Mr. Davis.
I have no reports, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we entertain the auditors.
Good evening. Does everybody have a copy of the financial statements? I will run through them briefly. I'm Cory Johnson, partner on the audit. This is Sam Kreitz. He's the supervisor on the audit. We've both worked in on it, I think, for four years. I want to make a couple of general remarks regarding the audit. We've had the fortune working with Mike here the last couple of years. So I want to start with the single audit report, which frankly, from the Fed and state's perspective, that's part of the report they care about, and we said, report details how federal and state dollars have been, or are they spending compliance with regulations established by the Fed and state. This is the second year in a row we had no audit findings. Before that, we had fairly significant audit findings. So what that means to you as a district, for the first time probably ever, starting next year, in the eyes of the federal and state government, you're going to be a low-risk commodity. Congratulations, we've had.
Thank you. Can everyone hear the auditors in the back? Can we hear John?
You should stand here. I just want to start with the single audit report. You know, a couple of highlights about the single audit report, there's two different opinions in that. One is an opinion on controls and compliance at the overall financial statement level. And then there's another report that lists an opinion on controls and compliance at what they call the major permanent level. That's the detailed federal dollars that we tested. Again, we had no findings in either of those reports. Our first couple of years here, we had significant findings. The last two years, we had no findings in the Fed defiance, a low-risk commodity, as someone who hasn't had findings in a minimum of two-year period. So next year, you'll be going to a low-risk commodity status, which in theory should reduce some of our federal audit test work. We don't have that. That's such a large sample. We only have to require to test 25% of your federal expenditures versus 50%. As you can see...
I'm sorry.
Okay. As you can see in this report, this year, we tested 62% of the federal audit expenditures. So that's a signal. We won't do that in particular. All right. The other thick report is the financial statements themselves. I want to share a couple of highlights here. General fund, unassigned fund balance is approximately $2.7 million, which is up from $2.1 million the prior year. That's a little bit of a decrease when you look at it from a change in fund balance in 2012 and change in fund balance in 2013. That's also not alarming in this day and age in school districts. It's about 11%. Your total fund balance, unassigned fund balance, is about 11% of current year expenditures, which is a solid number when you look at it. The other side of that coin is, okay, there's going to be future expenditures with the new debt service. So I assume that's been taken into consideration, future budgetary strategies. The only really, the new footnote in here in these financial statements is a subsequent event footnote, which talks about the new debt issuance, the refundings, the new money and the refundings of some prior debt issuances. The only other fund I really want to talk about a little bit was the Cafeteria Fund. There was a loss, if you look at it that way, of about $120,000. There's historically been a loss in that fund. You know, I think that's a couple-fold. One, grant revenues are down, operating expenses are up, and just the receipts from the students are down in the current year, so...
What do I find out on this report?
Cafeteria Fund, I will point that out to you.
With the Cafeteria Fund...
Page 18.
With the Cafeteria Fund, I know when we... There was a change in cafeteria managers.
Yes.
A deficit, a point of change. You know, I think back at that point, it would have been a good idea for us to have an audit of the Cafeteria Fund, where the new manager came in to find out where we were losing the money and why we lost that money, so it doesn't fall on a new person coming in. I mean, did you find some areas that we can make changes in, or where this money was lost?
That's a good question.
So it doesn't keep happening?
From the standpoint where you're coming from, we're looking at it from a monetary perspective.
Right.
I mean, total balance sheet, income statement, not... You're asking more of an operational type question.
Exactly. Why did it get to that point? Yeah.
I can't answer that. That's a good question, but I can't.
Why isn't there?
I can't answer that.
Because at one point, I thought we were doing fine with it, and then all of a sudden, that person left.
Frankly, in comparison to other school districts, Cafeteria Fund is strong. I mean, grant funding is down across the board.
Yeah, one point years ago.
I mean, you know, student enrollment, you know, costs are going up. It's a bad combination.
The part that runs me is if I have an audit hearing in front of my back, it's squeaky clean, perfect, but I'm showing I got losses in something, I can be a house. Maybe I don't understand what your job is as an auditor.
Sure.
And that's very possible. But I would think that somewhere in this report, we had finding.
Just because there's a big loss in operations, there's no findings for a loss in operations. There's findings for a lack of compliance with state and federal guidelines. So just because you lost in this fund does not mean, and in this case particularly does not mean, that you did not comply with state or federal regulations.
So more or less.
It just cost you more than you take.
We just need to figure out why we're losing the money.
Correct.
Quick question.
Sure.
Would any of the federal regulations have an impact on that as well?
No.
No?
I guess, yeah, some of the title, yeah, the lunch fund, yes.
Lunch, yeah.
Correct. So yes, I mean, so these monies, good question, are covered, served from a compliance perspective. The grant pieces. We're not looking in particular at, you know, we're not vouching, we're not going out to the cafeteria watching students pay their bills. You know, there's a control system in place that we rely upon for that.
Mike, do we know what our unpaid balances are to the Cafeteria Fund? What the Cafeteria Fund owes the General Fund?
Look on page 17.
Or what students owe for lunch? What students and teachers owe? Wait, teachers owe?
Yes.
Why you calling teachers owe? I wasn't here, Mike. I have a little big problem, because I got a note home a couple of weeks ago, my daughter owed 15 cents. And it's because my daughter, she loves to eat. She'll, I'll give her lunch at night, she decides to go get breakfast. So whatever it is in the balance, she owed 15 cents. But the teachers are owing? How's that possible?
They said there's about two or three that owe over $50.
$50!
That's why you see on the agenda tonight, it was added a collection policy for the liquid lunch accounts.
I saw that, but I thought that was just for the parents, because I was actually in here, I was actually going to come here, because I read some in the paper, I wasn't here Monday, and I was going to come here, and I wanted to make a motion, I didn't know that was there, that we legally go after some of these people that are $50 and over, because there's no excuse for it. Now I'm here, and there's teachers $50?
That's what this motion does, Mr. President.
Well, when they're done, I got another one. Okay, I'll wait, I'm not going to get into it. Mrs. Keever, do you have? I've let this one go for a couple of years since somebody threw business cards at me, but I'm going to touch it again. Go ahead. Mrs. Keever, do you have the amount that is owed to the Cafeteria Fund?
It's like $5,000. It's over $5,000.
You know, the tax...
To the penny, yeah, it changes every day.
It is over $5,000. We need to go after these people.
As you say, $5,200.
That's what this motion does. Okay.
That's current, that doesn't account for debt that's from years, prior years, or that have left the district?
That's basically only what we have reported with the new system. I mean, if a taxpayer doesn't pay his taxes, they go after that taxpayer's house, no matter how old they are, how poor they are. But you have people here that are owing all this money, parents, and now teachers, I find out, they're folks who's... And you have taxpayers who put the bills in.
It's certain, I don't know, that's a common problem. I mean, you think about it, tax perspective, you even put a lien on something, cafeteria perspective, you can't, so... Go ahead, sir.
So the proprietary fund, that's strictly the cafeteria?
Correct.
Great, continue.
I mean, really, they were the highlights of the financial statements. Beyond that, there were no new footnotes or any other major items to discuss here in the current year. I got one to touch, you know, first of all, is the general fund fund balance, positive position. You know, 11% of current year general fund expenditures is solid, you know, in this day and age, this economy, so... And no findings below risk commodity status for the future. That's commendable.
So, getting into language terms, all in all, our audit is?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
A+, B-, C...
A+ no findings. That's true.
We're getting an A+ on the audit?
Yes.
Very good.
From a compliance perspective?
The new board chair, I wanted to make sure that kind of... Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, if you have questions, go ahead, I'm sorry. Anyone else have any questions for the auditors?
Thank you.
Okay. Education Director Dorsey.
Okay. I move to send a thank-you letter to Chad Corley, store manager of Lowe's, for the Build and Grow Program, brought to our students enrolled in our Life Skills classes.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor? Aye. Randy, do you want to make some of the value?
Yeah, yeah, it's good, now that's on my mind. About a year and a half ago, well, Monday night, you know, was a finance meeting, a lot of discussions about the finances of the district, and, you know, my thing is always, you know, we need to find out where we can recoup money where we're at the point, so we don't have to raise taxes. So as of now, tax rates can only be under Act 1, $143,000 we can get in, new tax money in. Like I said, about a year and a half ago, I touched on something, and it always eats at me. Everybody that works for a living, bad roads, bad weather, you still have to go to work. If you choose not to go to work, you don't get paid. In our district, and I don't mean this as disrespect, because it's just something that's been allowed, our teachers come in on a two-hour delay with the students, which means they don't make that two hours up, they're being paid those two hours. And we've had 11 two-hour delays so far. So that's 22 hours per teacher that have been paid for, but they do not have to make up. We have about 130 teachers in the district, which comes to about 2,860 hours of tax revenue money that's been pretty much lost, that the teachers are getting in pay, and they don't make that up. If you multiply that by average teacher's wage per hour, you know, I had Mike do a calculation before for me, that comes to, so far this school year with 11 two-hour delays, tax payer money that's been pretty much given away is now at $125,655. That's what we've lost so far in 11 two-hour delays, and that's going to grow. So now, if we can only under Act 1 bring in now $143,000 of new tax money, we've already eaten up on two-hour delays. So what do we do? Do we have to negotiate that into the next contract? Or, I mean, it's really not fair to the taxpayers. I know the last time I brought this up, I was kind of attacked by a disrespectful teacher throwing business cards at me. And I understand that teachers do extra and everything, but they're compensated well in this district for that. It's just the fact, we're at a point now that we don't have a lot of money coming in, and we just can't afford, well, I say taxpayers can't afford to keep giving away $125,000, we're almost at $126,000. And that's what I want to make a comment out of. We need to figure out how to make a change, whether it be this, but I mean, this is a major loss in taxpayer money that we're going through, and we're talking about raising taxes. So are we talking about raising taxes so we can pay for two-hour delays? And I know it's a safety issue, but it's also been a money issue at this point. That's something we've got to think about.
Thank you.
Status savings. Personnel. And that's also a half mil, half mil in tax money almost.
Just salary.
Yeah, I know. Not benefits.
I would just like to ask Mr. Dorsey a question. So what are you proposing?
I don't know, it's the board.
I'm not sure I understand, even having the teachers come in, let's say, it's just teachers. I believe administrators also do not come when there's a two-hour?
No, we do. We do come in. It may vary at times. Sometimes we don't based on the roads, but we do come in, secretaries come in.
To me, the only way to recoup that money is if you don't pay for that two hours.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Is if they're not, if I don't go to, if I, if the roads are bad, I'm supposed to report to work at 8:00, I choose to go into 10:00, why don't I get paid for those two hours? And if I want paid for those two hours, I got to use my own time to be paid for those hours. I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers that they're paying for those hours and nobody's working. And I, like I said, I understand that many teachers take things home, do things at home, but also there's time in their day allotted for a lot of that stuff done, to be done. Compensation's good here.
Mr. Seeley, just to clarify, not all do, most do based on their needs and times, but not all do, most administrators do.
And what would you propose that the teachers do?
I just propose, like John said, you don't pay them, or they use their own time, like...
That's the only way you could reap a savings. I mean, you bring them in, you're not getting saved.
If they don't pay, they pay, then they use their personal time or whatever they have to use. That's what I have to do.
That may be something that's an alternative.
I know teachers don't like me saying this.
You either don't pay them, or you take their personal time away, that's the only way you get savings.
Teachers aren't going to like hearing me say this, but as a taxpayer and a working person that has to go through that, you know, it's not fair. Like I said, when you come to the point and say, it's $125,000 already that we've paid for no education, that's key, no education, $125,000, that is a half a mil of taxpayers' money. That's what...
Well, I don't tend to agree with your statement. I understand what you're saying, but if there are not any students here to teach...
Then those?
Then I don't think a lack of education is a valid point.
Okay, then the teacher, if you're going that way, then the teacher can come in on time and do lesson plan work, can do...
That's valid.
Any type of paper correcting, or whatever work that they are saying that they're having to take home and do. Hey, you have all these two-hour delays, there should never be a need to take anything home the past couple of months.
Well, that's a different statement.
Yeah, I'm just saying...
Well, Mr. Dorsey, I understand what you're saying, but you know as well as I do that they're under contract.
I understand that.
For us to be able to do anything with that?
But when we're going out saying we want to raise taxpayers' millage on the taxpayers, taxpayers need to understand where money's going.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So even if there's a vote in June to raise taxes, to recoup or bring in an extra $143,000, that's easily eaten up on two-hour delays, that we don't see that money come back.
Okay. Personnel.
I may, I move to add the following names to the intermediate unit subversion substitute list, Dana Igales, and Auguste C. Icaus.
Second. Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Bane, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm B., I move to add Kelsey and Despot to the professional substitute list.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm C., I move to hire Laura Johnson as secondary teacher for Brownsville High School.
Second.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Gates, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Item D, I move to hire Andrew Robuck as equipment manager for the remainder of the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Questions? This was not discussed on Monday night.
Uh, it wasn't, I did send an email out to all board members because it needed to be done.
But we still didn't discuss it, so I feel that we should go into executive session and discuss this, but we have a vote on it. Second? I'll second. Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Dorsey for executive session personnel. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? End at seven-thirty for a brief executive session. That's for personnel. Okay, I need a motion to come back in session. Motion by Director Tervekia, second by Director Bane. All in favor? Aye. Back in at seven-fifty-seven, we're in there for personnel. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second correct. There's a motion, second by Director Delaroz.
Yes.
Okay, uh, roll call please. And this was for item D, this was for item D, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
No.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Finance Director Bane.
I want to start off by, I want to send a thank you out to the fire departments, and the ambulances, the constables, and the community for the support of our area basketball team. I really appreciate that. Sean, he did a good job on organizing, and the men really enjoyed that. I'd like to consider, I would like to make a motion to acknowledge the notification of the following respiratory tax sales from the Fayette County Tax Claim Bureau, and authorize the President of the Board to sign the consent of the sale on behalf of the district of parcel oh-two, oh-six, three, seven, six. Parcel oh-three, oh-six, oh-one, four, six.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to authorize the Brownsville School District to continue the participation in the Western Pennsylvania National, Nat- Natural Gas Disortium to the purchase of natural gas for up to three-year term, concerning commencing with the service of the final meter reading date of August of two thousand fifteen.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to accept the agreement with Peacock Keller for their fee for representation to Brownsville Area School District.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Tervekia. Questions?
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
And Mr. Assis?
Yes.
I'm moving to adopt the attached intermediate unit one general operation budget from the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year in the amount of two million, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, with Brownsville share being ten thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Tervekia. Questions?
Quick question. That, that ten thousand, is that correct? That's the correct number?
Yes.
Is that lower than?
Lower than lower, it's nothing, it's lower than a thousand.
Motion and second, roll call please.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
I'm moving to adopt a collection policy for the K through twelve student lunch account unpaid balances.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Questions? How come this is strictly says student? How come this doesn't have teacher?
We have a policy already in place regarding students. This is the additional policy regarding students. As for the teachers, we do not have to have the policy. The, you know, we actually provide credits.
Okay, thank you.
Credit. Say that in your jury.
We don't even have to provide credit accounts to teachers. If, if we have a policy in place for students, that's why we now are passing this collection policy.
Okay, now, the collection of unpaid balances, is that going to go towards these teachers that aren't paying for lunch?
We can do that in a time.
I don't know whether we need to mention that either, because, um, even, even student-wise, I'm hearing that there's hundreds of, well, we gave the five thousand dollar amount. I mean, there should be a collection process.
That's student parent, or student and teacher.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, the students all together, I know, I know the teacher balance is relatively small, the students, but still it's there. And, um, should we, if, if we're going to go vote on this, give a quick highlight of this policy, or just say we're voting on the policy?
I can do, I mean, it's up to you.
I, I mean, I, I think we should present a highlight of what we're doing before we vote.
I agree with that.
I mean, I can have, we already have a cafeteria charge procedure in place for elementary schools and high schools. Under that policy that we have, there's a balance notices that are sent out weekly, and then there's second notices, third notices after so many days. But that policy didn't include proceeding to the magistrate. This would proceed to the magistrate through civil complaints filed. Now, in the policy, um, in what we have in place here is that this would count our, um, deal with delinquent K through twelve accounts that have reached an unpaid balance of fifty dollars or more. Once that happens, you can send up a notice in accordance with our previous policy, notifying that if this is not paid, then we are going to proceed by referring this to the district magistrate. And that's the process, that's what the process would be.
My question is, if we have a child, their parents have not paid for their lunch, they've run up a bill, say, a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, are we going to consequence the child, not give them anything to eat?
No.
Okay, so we're still going to give them the food?
We didn't.
Because that's my, my biggest concern is we make sure that it's on the parents, because that's.
No, no, there, there, we have our procedures in place, we will not, never deny that.
Let's see, I wasn't here Monday here all this.
Not just students.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion to Brownsville Director Harvey?
Thank you. I move to approve the proposal from Vector Security to install a video intercom entrance security system for the high school at a cost of two thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars. A video intercom entrance security system for the middle school at a cost of two thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars. Also, an additional camera to face the high school counter at a cost of nine hundred, or, excuse me, seven hundred ninety-four dollars. And an additional camera to face the middle school counter at a cost of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Questions?
Do we already have a camera for the high school entrances? And we have to purchase one for the middle school, is that why there's some difference between the two?
We're doing that.
There's a difference because we have to come all the way from the middle school to the steering office of the kid, that's why it's expensive.
There's no camera in the high school.
There's no camera, this is also the whole, the whole job.
There's no camera in the high school.
For middle.
And motion and second, roll call please.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
I move to approve option D two floor plan for the Brownsville Elementary School complex.
Second. Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, before I go into athletic, I, I was given a handwritten letter this afternoon. And I'm going to make heads or tails of it. There's some like, I don't know, prescription. It says, to all of us, I would like to thank the Board of Directors, Board of Education, Dr. Sarini, Principals, Mr. Kuscha, Mr. Delaroz, Mr. Gates, Mr. Ness, Mr. Clement, Rachel McLeod, Elementary Principals, Mrs. Goody, Mr. Burn, Athletics Director, Mr. Roba, Custodian, Ken Ryan, Secretaries, Bus Drivers, Chief Carney, Mr. Giloz, Mr. Yakubek, Mrs. Keel, Food Service, Network, Mr. Boyd, all the teachers, especially those who take, who tutored my student athletes, and all the student body, for all of your support in the past eleven years, coaching in this district, especially Mr. Gates who recommended the eleven years ago today. Uh, also, Dr. Sarini, for also allowing me to take my players to the elementary school to speak and read to the students. On behalf of myself, my staff, my scorekeeper, our mascot, and my student athletes, we thank you, and we will be proud to raise the new banner, two thousand fourteen section basketball champs, Coach Brian Bershier. Athletic?
Item A, consider a motion to approve the Brownsville Area Band Boosters to take the marching band on a Monday field trip to Herschel Park for the Saturday, June seventh, two thousand and fourteen, for no cost of distance.
Second. Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Bane. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Questions?
Item B, consider a motion to approve the article agreement for the graduate athletic training internship at California University. The cost of acquiring a graduate athletic training intern is sixteen thousand dollars per intern.
Second. Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions?
That's the same as last year, the raise. It's up a thousand.
Fifteen for cheap.
They do an outstanding job.
It's for thirty hours a week, that's.
They do an outstanding job, I, I want to.
They do.
This year, they did a great job.
Since we had two. And a motion and a second, roll call please.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Aye. Stay.
And Mr. Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Item C, I move to hire Frank Jessup, the Baros's Middle School volleyball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Compensation settled step one of the athletic salary scale, fifteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions?
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Item D, I move to hire Caitlin Peterson as middle school head, head softball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Compensation settled step one of the athletic salary scale, fifteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Item E, I move to hire Dave Zimkoski as junior high baseball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Compensation settled step eight of the athletic salary scale, twenty-three hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Item F, I move to hire Kristi Gullett, assistant varsity softball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Compensation settled step ten, the athletic salary scale, thirteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Item G, I move to hire Patty Columbia, assistant varsity softball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Compensation settled step five of the athletic salary scale, eighteen hundred dollars.
Second. Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Bane. Questions?
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes. Item H, I move to hire Jeremy Thomas, assistant varsity baseball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Compensation settled step three of the athletic salary scale, fourteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions?
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Tervekia?
Yes.
Item I, I move to hire Ralph Weiss, assistant varsity baseball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Compensation settled step ten, the athletic salary scale, three thousand dollars.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions?
Page before step ten was thirty-two. Assistant varsity?
Yes. That should be three thousand.
That should be three thousand. What was thirty-two?
Step ten.
I, I.
By the rep.
We'll, we'll make the correction. It's in a portion of the contract.
Okay, motion and second, roll call please.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Mr. Delaroz?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Tervekia?
No.
Item J, I move to hire Brian Abbey, assistant varsity track coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Conversation settled step five of the athletic salary scale, eighteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Tervekia. Questions?
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Yes.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Terabekia. Questions?
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Breschier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terabekia?
Yes.
Item K, I move to hire James Coffey, assistant varsity track coach for the 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step three of the athletic salary scale, $1,400.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Terabekia. Questions?
Mrs. Terabekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terabekia?
Yes.
Item G, I move to hire Patty Columbia, assistant varsity softball coach for the 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step five of the athletic salary scale, $1,800.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Terabekia. Questions?
Mrs. Terabekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Breschier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
I abstain.
And Mr. Assis?
Yes. Item N, consider motion approved Larry Cash, assistant varsity track coach for the 2013-2014 school year.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Terabekia. Questions?
Question, he's not going to miss any work.
If his schedule prohibits that, then he's going to tend to...
Practice is...
All in favor? Aye.
Item O, I move to hire Scott Root, middle school head track coach for the 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step one of the athletic salary scale, $1,500.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Terabekia. Questions?
Mrs. Terabekia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Breschier?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terabekia?
Yes.
Item Q, consider motion approved Randy Schrobak to be a middle school volunteer assistant track coach for the 2013-2014 school year.
Motion by Director Assis, second by Director Terabekia. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Superintendent?
Excuse me, Board, I wanted to make a comment to you folks and to the people out of the audience. Under Buildings and Grounds, you saw that the Board had approved the new elementary complex. Since I've been here, the Board has tried for that long to get something done. I want to commend this Board, particularly Mr. Harvey, for biting the bullet, making a vote so difficult in these times, particularly with the demographics of this area, to come so close to the budget and still working on the plans for the building. But this is such a progressive move on their part during this time that I felt, as a person who graduated from here, I'm very proud to be working with you on this and I commend all of you and in particular, Mr. Harvey, for your leadership on the Buildings and Grounds. It's been tough, but I'm very proud and I just wanted to thank all of you. I'd like to go one step further. The amount of work that this man has done on this project stems back before you even got here. So, I'd just like to extend my gratitude also for his time.
I appreciate all that, but it served the team.
You're right. You're right. I mean, I appreciate the compromise of this Board in certain areas to make this work. And we had a board in place where it was a fighting battle, trying to get this project moving for years. And I mean, we're really moving forward with it. You've been doing the Yaman's job, getting the school coming with suggestions and getting the team together. And I think we're going to have a nice thing for our students here probably a year and a half or so.
No one can say we rushed it, they didn't. Forty years ago.
No.
But in eighteen months, we will hopefully have a new elementary complex. Get the time scheduled for this. Anybody else? Okay, item nine, public comments on non agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name and nature of business. Last chance.
My name's Belinda Johnson.
Let's pull it a little closer, you can't hear me.
Sorry, my name is Belinda Johnson and I'm here on an incident with my grandson and another student on a school bus incident. My grandson, who was sitting in his seat in the school bus, halfway down the school bus, gets attacked by another student who's that very kind of bus driver, gets out of his seat, punches my grandson twice in the face, and then my grandson did hit him back. And then the student sitting with my grandson pulled that student off of him. My grandson had no way to get out of his seat before he got punched, but I am being told by the school district that he's now suspended for five days from the bus. I am a working grandmother. I have no way to get him to school or pick him up. I need to know what the school board would like to do with this.
Well, we wouldn't have any knowledge at this point.
Based on the investigation and under our policy, and you should have been sent a message in our process, I just want to give it back to you, but I believe my secretary...
I did, yes, I did go back.
Yeah, but based on the investigation that I did with the principal, it falls under that policy that actually the Board passed last year. And that's where we are.
So, you're telling me my grandson's in his seat, trapped, cannot get out of his seat, he gets punched twice by a student, he doesn't have a right to defend himself?
I can't go into that, but that's not entirely the whole investigation that I received. And I can't go into any more in this realm.
Well, then why is my grandson suspended if you go into this investigation?
Let me finish. Well, my investigation goes right to the principal, and there was more to it, and the decision that they made is the proper decision based on the policies we have at this time.
Well, I don't, I never got no letter on what else was decided on this. The only thing I know is...
Weren't you notified by the principal of the outcome?
Yes, but she didn't say what happened that my grandson couldn't get out of his seat. If your child's sitting in a seat and somebody comes and punches him twice in the face, what is your child going to do?
I understand it, but I'm not going to get into that part, but what you're saying is that you needed more information.
Exactly.
Well, I'll take care of that tonight.
And so my grandson is still suspended from the bus. He's supposed to miss five days of his education.
Well, there's always opportunities if you can to find other routes or other ways.
I have no other way. I'm his only grandparent. His other grandfather has a different job, he cannot do it. We can get him to school, we just can't get him home.
You can get him to school, can't get him home.
Yes, I can get him to school, but there's nobody getting home in time.
The suspension does not include him staying out of school, it's just a plus. Plus, plus. So, let me talk to the principal on that, see if we can work that part out.
Or if the Board feels that this was to be done, could he have the Mondays? I am off on Mondays.
If it's a continuing investigation?
No, it's done. It's done.
There is a policy, but how do you defend yourself? What is that policy? Consider our kids in school. You let somebody pound on you? We have trouble with this kid since Dakota started kindergarten. I took him off of that bus for two and a half years. I just put him back on that bus because of our job changes. And as soon as he got on his bus again, this is the second incident with the same student. And this student's still riding the bus. I thought after your third incident, you got thrown off of the bus.
He's suspended.
He's suspended with Dakota, but this is this child more than his third time. I was told first time, five days, second time, third...
We cannot discuss another student. What we can discuss, only to a certain degree, is what I've said. Now, again, we'll follow up with the principal. If you need more information, I'll get that to you, number one. Number two, again, the policy says that your child is allowed to school but has to find another avenue. And maybe there's something there that can be worked out, not through the district, but maybe other routes that I can talk to with the administration. I don't know. And I can't discuss it here, and will not discuss it here, but I'll talk to the principal. Principal will notify you of any more information that you need. And we'll go from there.
I'll shadow from that for now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trish and Stapp, until, first of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Dr. Savini and Mr. Roba for our girls' soccer team finally. I stand for you, and I just want to bring some awareness of the situation that's going on that I'm not sure all of you are aware of. I've spoken to Mr. Carney numerous times and have placed several phone calls to the high school principal concerning some things that are going on. Mr. Delarose and I, actually, probably the second week of school this year, sorry, witnessed something pertaining to this same topic, and that's the driving and speeding on school routes.
We've got to hold it close.
Keep it down. Get the break. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Alan. Boy, we're not...
The speeding is completely out of control. This is during school time, after-school activities. They are speeding on the way to school. I have addressed it. I have a complaint. I'm handing it in right this evening because I know complaints get misplaced. I will be willing to talk to anybody about this, but somebody is going to get killed. Mr. Delarose and I witnessed a car, and it had to be going forty, forty-five miles per hour, if not more. This kid had no consideration that an adult tried to stop him, and this has been going on throughout the entire year. It happens mostly at when schools being let out, which, what I'm asking, you just approved purchase of video cameras for the offices. I think after speaking with Mr. Carney and him telling me that he has to watch eight hundred students getting on the school buses, there's nobody watching the students in the student parking lots. And there has to be some enforcement or that they know that they can't get away with this. There was an incident today that I haven't even got a chance to talk to anything about except Mr. Carney during executive session, that there was a car almost T-bowed by another, and there's these fifteen witnesses to this incident.
Where were they?
The first stop sign leaving school property. I understand that, but these were students that were on a school field trip, driving their own cars from school time. And it happened, the incident started in Redstone Township, it went through Brownsville, and came up here to Luzern. And if I have to go to every one of those municipalities and file a complaint, I want this Board and Dr. Savini to know that you have been warned.
We, I know, I'm in transpiration. To me, all the passes should be taken off all the students. If you're backing out in front of the buses, or they shouldn't be let out until every bus leaves.
Well, I think in defense, I also have a student driver and maybe just education, you know, if there's a protocol of how they're supposed to leave and how they're supposed to come, but you have students who think that their social status in the school determines where they park out on that senior parking lot, which is also leading to my next, which is related to this, is that this policy for the senior parking lot, and I know this might seem trivial, and I've stood before you over academics and safety and things over the years, but I've tried to address this issue for two months now, and I've been waiting for the high school principal to give return a call from two weeks and two days ago that I've never received. But the school, high school parking policy for seniors says seniors only, no exceptions, no excuses, and we have a junior student driving a junior car who is registered to a junior parent parking in the senior lot. They have no physical challenges that require that, and not only do they park in that senior lot, and they drive a senior student, but they tarant every single person who parks in that lot. Now, what this is, they've perceived, they have been overridden according to Mr. Carney and have been given special permission from one of you people up here, I know that. But with that being said, what has happened now?
Wait, but I have to stop you because what you're saying is not true.
Mr. Sealy, is that what you called it?
Three of the things you just said are not true. Mr. Carney, the person driving the vehicle she's talking about is who? Is the senior driving someone else's car?
No, no, it's...
Let him speak.
It's a junior driving a, it's a junior driving a car with a senior in it.
And the senior's going what? I'm sorry, what? I'm up here.
What does this happen? Now, you have four of them here parking in the senior lot now in addition to this junior.
It's a junior driving a senior to our senior lot. The car registered in the junior's lane, but he's using a senior parking pass.
Now, wait. The senior bought the pass.
Correct.
This is real opinion, but the senior bought the pass. When the senior does not have a car due to parents working, the senior's friend who's a junior drives it. That's it.
The policy says not accepted.
No exceptions, no excuses.
The policy says not accepted.
What makes a difference? Where that student parks?
That's not how it works.
But what makes a difference where that senior parks if they, if the ride is getting to school through that junior, parking the junior lot or ride the bus that has been provided for them?
We'll sit there and say, "For the senior."
Because now what I'm telling you is there's four more juniors parking in the senior lot Mr. Carney is aware of, that he told me he will die because he says his hands are tied, and now it's causing juniors and seniors to go recklessly.
Let's correct. For one thing, I don't know if these juniors are parked in a lot. He told me that tonight.
No, I told you that two weeks ago.
He told me two kids, two.
Well, it's increased before then.
The policy says not... We never did that before. Well, it's not my decision.
Excuse me, Mr. Kinchette, did you make the call?
No, sir, I didn't.
Didn't you talk to her before about this?
No, I was instructed that it would be handled by the administration.
I've been waiting for two weeks and two days so I don't have to come out here and do this.
We have a policy in place. We should follow all the policy.
I signed the policy because it has apparent consent on it too, so I signed mine. But going back to the safety, is there anything, if Mr. Carney and his staff, their hands are tied with the eight hundred kids getting on the school bus, is there anything that this district can do to help provide some safety issue enforcement in place for the senior lot?
Okay, let me give you a story about a parent real quick. A kid threw this lot in October while the buses were unloading, drove through the lot, hit a kid, kept going, "I gotta go to work," left the kid laying on the ground. We're sick of this. We're sick of the parents not following the damn sign out there that says, "Do not bring your kids and teach them to escape." So, what we're going to do, we're going to stop this, because I've heard enough of it for ten years. The parents have no problem coming through, driving through buses unloading, going past the buses in the back of school with the red lights on. We're going to start citing them and whatever we have to do, because this is enough is enough. We'll move the student parking lot outside the gates.
We correct that problem.
We correct the policy. So, for Buildings and Grounds, we will change this.
Yeah, we got to come up with some new traffic and get it out.
Yeah, it's an ongoing thing. We're hearing this every month, month after month, and the things we have tried, I don't know how well they have worked, you know? When Rocky's saying either pull the passes or move the parking lot somewhere, and we actually said, "Parents can't come all the way in, drop them off at the gate," that's the things we got to look at because if it's going to keep happening, we have to worry about the safety of the kids.
We'll get a back ninety-four without the gate.
But it doesn't just, it doesn't just stop at that because Mr. Carney told me in executive session in the hallway that when they have had Luzern Township come up here and speed and force the area, unfortunately, a lot of the people that they pull over are teachers. So, this has to be district-wide, address to everybody, students, parents, administrators, teachers, everybody, because spring sports are going to be starting. You're going to have softball out there, people, buses, rocking, everybody walking back and forth. Somebody is going to get seriously hurt.
Well, I have recommendations for the Board. Before you start, Jim, how many times in the last two years have I said the same? same? I mean, if you do something like speed. I know about this. The school took them out. Years ago, they had speed policy, they took them out every day.
Every time, every time.
Did you make a ruffle? They make a ruffle when you lay down, and then in winter time you remove?
But I think a lot of it, until you get this, you know, implemented and something improved or, I think going back to just standing true to your own policies is the first thing. I mean, when you, when you, when you tell a person because they've been caught recklessly driving, and you give them, because the policy states two weeks' suspension, and they only receive one, and they only receive one, then that's a problem because you're teaching everybody to just go ahead and do whatever they want, and you only get half the punishment or no punishment at all. Thank you for your time.[1693.76]